The City Council Committee of the Whole met in council chambers Thursday, May 16, 2024 at 6:00 PM. For the purpose of discussing the matters listed below, notice this meeting was posted on May 10, 2024 at 1:41 PM. Councillors in attendance, we have Councillor Davis, Councillor Harvey, Councillor Merkel, Councillor Cohen, Councillor Stott, Councillor Morcillo. Absent are Councillor Proznowski, Councillor Watsonfeldt, Councillor Varela, and Councillor Jerslow. We also have with us Tom Daniel, Amanda Chincola, Kate Newhall-Smith, and Elena Emmer. We are meeting discuss number 161, Presentation from the Department of Planning and Community Development regarding Smart Growth Zoning Overlay, Chapter 40R, and the H-DIP program. So the way we're going to do this is we're going to have a presentation from, I believe it's Tom or Amanda, Amanda, a presentation from Amanda Chincola. We'll have, open up to questions from the council, and then if we have time at the end, we will take some public comment if there's any, anybody willing to give public comment. So with that, Tom or Amanda?
I'm just going to kick things off while Amanda pulls, there it is, while she pulls up the presentation. So Tom Daniel, Planning Director, and just wanted to put a little bit of this in context. Let me go to the next slide. So similarly, when we were here talking about the Climate Resiliency Lobby, the district gave you a little sort of context for other work that's been going on. Just wanted to preface this, you know, we've, we've been talking a lot about housing the past several years, but I think people have always been talking about housing. If you go back, I came across some planning reports from the early 1900s, and in 1912, they were talking, you know, there was concerns about the quality of housing, you know, poor, poor structures, you know, fire hazards, unsanitary living conditions, and that was a big concern in 1912, before the Great Fire. Reported in 1917, you know, the concern was there wasn't, you know, adequate quality housing for industrial workers because factory-type jobs here, and the concern was the community didn't have quality, safe housing for those employees. And that was a negative to Salem in terms of, you know, being competitive and viable. So jumping ahead, this is not a comprehensive list of things that the city's been involved with since the 80s, but we just wanted to highlight a couple of things so folks knew that this wasn't a new area that the city's been involved with. So CDBG, we became a CDBG entitlement community in 1984. We've been running a couple of housing programs that are focused on low and moderate income households, so first-time homebuyer program, Housing Rehab Program. 2006 is when the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board was first set up with an initial chunk of money. And it's hard to remember, but if you go back to the 2000s and in that time, there was a little bit of talk about, you know, affordable housing needs in the broader public. Like clearly, there's always been people talking about housing needs, but sort of at a broader community level, there were starting to have some conversations because property values had been increasing quite well in the early 2000s. The trust started, shortly thereafter, we had the Great Recession. The conversation in the housing issue that we were dealing with then was foreclosure, the foreclosure crisis. And so while it's not listed on the screen, you know, the city worked to try and provide services to prevent foreclosures from happening so people wouldn't be displaced. And that really was the dominant discussion for several years, dealing with the subprime lending crisis. Excuse me, we had started around that same time, being able to have a policy through the planning board about having a certain percentage, 10% of units being affordable. Is it okay with my talking? Okay. 10% of the units being affordable at 80% AMI back then. I'm hearing the feedback, and I don't know. Okay, how's this sound? Okay? All right, so I'll just, I'll just advance up to 2018. So Imagine Salem was a process that we ran, a community-wide process. We were talking about housing jobs and transportation with a lens of equity to it. We had about 2,000 points of engagement with residents in Salem in 2018. And that was really the first time where, you know, post the 2008 crisis, housing, subprime lending crisis, where, you know, people were connecting around stories of a friend or a family member who were really struggling with finding a place to live. And people were connecting the dots. One of the value that came out on top of that Imagine Salem process was diversity. People really loved the fact that Salem had all different types of people that lived here, whether that was educational attainment, socioeconomic background, race, gender, you know, sexual orientation. And they saw that like, wow, the housing prices are really increasing, and that's affecting, you know, who can live here, and that's going to affect this value of diversity that we hold. And so we led, you know, we had a big community meeting at the Community Life Center where we were talking about some housing, potential housing areas for study, like inclusionary zoning and accessory dwelling units and the disposition of public land. And we're really looking for input from the community about what to prioritize. And we've been working on all that, you know, since that time. 2023, we now have a housing roadmap, and what's listed on the screen there are, you know, strategies that are either done or being worked on currently. And so, you know, Amanda and Elena, you know, are leading those efforts. Kate Newhall-Smith is here as well this evening. Because of the tools we're talking about, we're all going to be involved with them, and just wanted to hear the discussion. Kate actually has experience with the 40R zoning tool in a prior position. So, you know, our work continues throughout, you know, the time that I've been here, when, when there's an opportunity to use a tool, we pursue that and see how it fits, you know, is it a fit for Salem? And how do we utilize that to advance, you know, our, our work? So tonight, we just wanted to talk with you about a tool we haven't used, the 40R Smart Growth District, and then a refresher, or maybe the first time some folks are hearing about the Housing Development and Center Program and how that works. We're anticipating projects coming in, requesting to utilize these tools this year, so we want to just give you some basics tonight. And I'll turn things over to Amanda. If you have questions, we'll try to answer tonight, and if we can't, we will track down the answers and send them to you after. Thanks.
I'll also note that Laurie Stewart has joined us as well.
Hey there, thank you. So we're going to talk about these two programs tonight, and although they're both very different, there are quite a bit of similarities between them. These are two programs that were created to promote housing growth. That's the goals of these programs is for housing growth. They're both incentive-based programs, and they're unique to Massachusetts. These are created through Massachusetts General Law, and they require some sort of state approval as part of the process. So for the agenda tonight, I'll start with 40R. We'll talk about an overview of what that is, the benefits of a 40R district, minimum requirements that are involved in creating that ordinance, the process, and then questions, and then we'll do the same thing for the Housing Development Incentive Program. So for 40R, it's a little funny, we call it 40R. That's the chapter of Massachusetts General Law that it's codified under, and it got that shorthand. It's also referred to as the Smart Growth Zoning and Housing Production Act, and that's a bit of a mouthful. So what is smart growth? Smart growth is development that encourages a mix of building types and uses, diverse housing and transportation options, and it's development within existing neighborhoods. So there's this group, Smart Growth America, that defines smart growth as, above all, it's about helping every community become more economically prosperous, socially equitable, environmentally sustainable, helping everyone flourish. So if you think about that, a household, for example, without a car, or can have the option of having a vehicle, would flourish in an area where there's other uses around that they don't need to drive to, or there might be transit close by. So location's really important with the 40R district and smart growth. It creates incentives through cash payments to the municipality, and the zoning must meet specific requirements to be eligible, and I'll talk about both of those in the next slide. I do also want to note this is an overlay district that would be created. And so what that means is, if a zoning ordinance is, a 40R district is created, that underlying or current zoning remains there, and that is still an option. The 40R is another option, so developer could choose to either develop with the baseline zoning or that overlay. And for benefits, there are two types of financial incentives. There's a one-time zoning incentive for when the ordinance is adopted and approved by the state. And that amount ranges from anything from $10,000 to $600,000. It's based on a formula established in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40R, and the variables to that include, you know, what's the current land use, and what is the net new units that have potential to be created in that district? And so there's a lot that goes into that to figure out how much you'll get for that one-time incentive payment. The second incentive payment happens when building permits are issued under the ordinance. And it's a $3,000 incentive payment that goes per building permit of a net increase of housing. So let's say the underlying zoning allowed for 10 units by right, and the 40R district allowed for 15. Those additional five units, when they get building permits, will each get $3,000. So that's $15,000, and that's money that goes to the city's general fund. This is third sister ordinance called Chapter 46 that 40R districts are eligible for. It's referred to as a school reimbursement, and it's very rarely used because it's often not needed. But what this does is it would fill in the gap of funding where it's needed for the cost to educate children from a 40R district. So the state has a formula, a per pupil, per pupil cost to educate children, and if the funds from the development, and the funds from the development, I mean, the taxes generated from it in the state school aid, if those funds do not cover that generated formula of the per cost per pupil, then the 46 would fill in the gap, so if it's needed. A few other benefits, as you're all aware, the city is consistently going after grants, and we get a higher consideration when we have a 40R district. So when we apply for things like a park grant for renovation, you get additional criteria points, additional points on that grant. And it's a proactive tool. You'll see this when I talk about the process in a couple of slides, but it puts the community in charge on the front end. And again, you'll, you'll see that, but there's a lot of process involved with a 40R district. It allows for customized dimensional standards, and if a community chooses to, we could create design standards and design guidelines for the district. And again, the goal, the goal of a 40R district is supporting housing creation. As you'll see in our housing roadmap, our population has been increasing, and our housing production has not been keeping pace with that. We need more housing at all different levels, and this will help support that. For minimum requirements, these are set forth in Massachusetts General Law, and they're very specific items that need to be checked off to be eligible for those cash payments. A 40R district, again, it's smart growth, and so that means location is important. The district would need to be within either a half a mile of a train station, in areas where there's already existing improvement. So it's not for a district where it's currently a greenfield, far away from everything with no improvement. We want to see, the state wants to see that there's already infrastructure there, or that is otherwise deemed highly suitable, and their specific criteria are set forth in the ordinance, in the regulations for that. And again, for infrastructure, the area has to already have appropriate infrastructure to serve the projected growth, or that it will have the appropriate infrastructure within five years. There are minimum housing requirements in a district. For a 40R, it needs to be eight to 20 units per acre, and that depends on the type of housing. Multifamily development is 20 units per acre. And that's a really hard number to think about in your head, what, what does that mean and look like? So for a couple of examples, in the downtown, it's the built environment, this isn't what zoning would allow, but if you're just walking around downtown, it's 23 units per acre on the median. The North River Canal Corridor is about 27 units per acre, and Bridge Street Neck is 25 units per acre. So think of those kinds of neighborhoods in your head when you, when you think of a 40R district. Those are a little bit higher. 40R does have a minimum affordability requirement, and I want to stress it's a minimum. It could go, could allow for deeper affordability or more units, but at minimum, the district must have at least 20% of the units at 80% of the area median, area median income. The state also has regulations around the size of the district, and so the entire city of Salem cannot be a 40R district. The city is limited to 25% of the total land area as a 40R district. We can have more than one district, so you could have an overall district with sub-districts underneath it, but each sub-district cannot exceed 15% of the total land area. The process for development review under a 40R is through an as-of-right process, basically a site plan review, just like any site plan review, going through the planning board that's considered as-of-right. The difference with 40R is that it is a shorter timeline for the planning board. There's a 120-day period for them to review, but there are opportunities for extensions. And so if there needs to be more time, the applicant can request for an extension. And site plan review is an as-of-right permitting process, and so that means that it can only be denied if the planning board makes findings that the project is a, is not a complete application, or that it has serious adverse impacts that cannot be mitigated. And there's a different appeal process for 40Rs, and the reason for that is, what you'll see in the next slide, is there's such a large upfront process involved in creating the district, that once the district is approved by the city council and part of our ordinance, and the applicant's ready to move forward with a project, to appeal it, parties appealing would need to cover the bond for potential costs of delay to the developer. This is the outlining the process for a 40R district. The stars on the screen indicate opportunities for public comments. The orange square is showing the, the local process. And what I want you to notice here is the, the regular 40A process, and that's what we look at on a normal zoning amendment, is shown in the brownish-purple boxes. Those remain the same, there's no difference. So if you think about this ordinance is currently going through a zoning amendment for a climate resiliency ordinance, the process involved in that is the same, we just layer in additional steps with a 40R district. Those additional steps are shown with the white boxes. So the state has a two-step process. I'll start with the city's process. We are asking developers, or folks who are interested in creating a 40R, to have a community meeting before we start. And that's so members of the community are not surprised when the city holds a public meeting on a 40R district. There's already been some discussions, so folks know that this is in the pipeline. The third step I want to jump to is the preliminary application submitted to the state. That's a requirement of 40R. And what it is, is we're asking the state for permission to move forward with a 40R district, so that we can get those cash payments as a result of the new units and the, and the adoption of the ordinance. But we can't actually submit that application to the state to consider us until we hold a public hearing on the application. So we'll go back to step two. That second white box is for the city to hold a public hearing on the preliminary application. And so as these 40R districts come forward, that's the first official step that you'll see city staff working on, as well, there'll be an advertisement in the newspaper, we'll have a public hearing, and it'll be on that application for eligibility, for preliminary After that public hearing occurs, and the, and the purpose of that public hearing is for public comments, and so again, that star there is asking for public feedback on the application.
Thanks, Amanda. Can you just clarify, are you talking about the application to create the zoning, or the application to create housing within the zoning that's already defined?
Yeah, so that's great, thank you for asking that question. It's just to create the zoning. So that is an application to create the zoning. To create the housing in the zoning doesn't happen until the very end. So after we have that public hearing, then we can submit the preliminary application to the state to create the zoning, and the state has 60 days to review that application. And they'll respond with a letter to the city that says, either we're eligible, or we're not eligible. If we're not eligible, they'll give us, they'll tell us why, so that we can work on that. Once we're deemed eligible to move forward, then we'll start with the local process. So that's where we start with that normal 40A zoning amendment process, where we hold a joint public hearing, we submit the, first, we submit the ordinance to the city council for consideration. The city council will refer it to a joint public hearing with the planning board within 14 days of receiving the ordinance. The joint public hearing will be held, and after that joint public hearing is closed, the city council will refer it to the planning board. After the, and the planning board has 21 days to make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council takes two votes on it, this first and second passage. And just like any other 40A ordinance, city council has 90 days from the close of the public hearing to vote. What's unique about it, and a little bit different from some other zoning amendments, is the quantum of vote is a simple majority, rather than a two-thirds majority. So after the local adoption occurs and city council adopts second passage, then the city will submit the zoning ordinance to the state for final approval. And the, the ordinance can change, and you see that happen throughout the zoning amendment process. And what we usually like to say and refer to this as four corners, and what I mean by that is, we do a legal advertisement that goes in the newspaper to let folks know about this zoning amendment. And as long as we're still working within what we advertised, we can make adjustments to the ordinance. So what comes in can come out a little bit different, as long as it's within that advertisement, in that it still meets the minimum criteria set forth by the state. Once we get the final approval from the state, they have 30 days to review, then it become, it goes into effect, and developers can start submitting plan review applications for the actual housing that would be created. So you can see that's way further in the process. The plan review process, it goes through a site plan review with the planning board, as I mentioned, and that means that a butter to get a notification, there'll be an advertisement in the newspaper, there's public comments at those meetings, so again, another opportunity for public comments, and they, and after the planning board approves the project, then it can go into effect and move forward with their building permits. If they get all their other, there might be other approvals they need as well. The last step is just, is more of an administrative step, where staff will work through annual compliance with the state. So I know that was a lot of information, and I went through it a bit quickly, but I'm happy to answer questions, and if I don't have the answer, then I will get that to you at another date.
Thank you. I'll note that Councillor Jerslow has joined us. Just quickly before we get to the, get to Councillor Cohen's first question, just wanted to ask if the AMI requirements in this conflict with our own inclusionary zoning, how that, what that relationship looks like?
Sure. So this ordinance would be in, so each sub-district could have its own requirements, and they could go deeper, but for that district, whatever the affordability requirements are, it trumps that inclusionary housing ordinance. So inclusionary housing is 10%, at 60% AMI, this is 20% of the units at 80% of the AMI, but depending on the district, we could lower that.
Okay, so 20 at 80 would trump 10 at 60?
If that's the district, if that's what is in for the council for the district.
Okay. Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Hepworth. Through you to Amanda. I get three questions. The preliminary application to the state that's done by the, by your department, that's, is there anything that would be, initiate that through the council, or is that just something that the mayor of the, the city is applying?
That's done through the administration.
Okay. Second one is, under 40A, we have a lot of boards that have jurisdiction over things. Under the 40R, likely for terrorists or something like that, it would reduce how many boards, it would really reduce it to the planning board? There would be less of a process of going through all the boards that they, that a developer would have to go through now?
It could. We could also have design standards and a review process through the Design Review Board, so it depends on the district and how we formulate them.
Okay, but the, but your department could create like parameters for proceeding?
It would be established in the zoning ordinance, so it's whatever the steps are and the boards that would need to go to, established in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. And my last one is, and I know this is kind of general, the incentives, the, the monies that the city would receive, I know some of the money would go into the general fund. How do you or the department envision this money's being spent?
That I'll defer, it's a question for the administration, but it's, it's general fund money, so I'd recommend that it be flexible, we don't have to make that decision tonight.
If I could just follow up, is it possible for the city council to create some kind of structure on how the money is spent, or does it have to go into the general fund?
I'll look into that and get back to you.
Councillor Morcillo, Councillor Stott, and then Councillor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair President. Amanda, just to go back to the, the minimum affordability, we can create a district, you're saying, that's 50% at 40% if we wanted, within this overlay?
We could, you'd want to make sure that it's economically feasible.
Right. And so how does that play with the MBTA Act?
We already have a compliant district with the MBTA Act, so this will not conflict with that.
Okay, all right. So if we go back to the boxes and the process, the community meeting, I'm assuming that's where we are getting input from the public on what this district looks like, what the, how they want this to, to be defined, if there's any design considerations they want included, all of that. Would that be correct?
So the, the community meeting, that first local box, usually with a 40R district, you're established in a district and you don't have a development plan in front of you yet.
Right.
And so it'd be more of a vision in session, where you're looking, what would we want this neighborhood to look like, and that could be done there. For some of the districts that are in the pipeline, they have development partners who already are, have projects in mind for those. And so for those community meetings, the developers are sharing what they have in mind for an actual development. That community meeting is being led That community meeting is being led for the projects that have developers, have gone to them, the developers are leading those community meetings.
Isn't that kind of going backwards, though, if the 40R district, if the design, the design elements of the, of the zoning are coming from the developer as opposed to the residents?
So that community meeting, I wouldn't say the design is coming from them, it's a first viewing of what they have in mind to share and get feedback. And then the public hearing on the preliminary application is where we'd be looking for comments on what we're looking at for dimensional standards, and if there are design standards with the, with the application. And so that's when I was looking, what do you want it to look like? You may have already seen some plans, what do you think makes sense for the district?
So who's holding that public hearing on the preliminary application?
That is, the city is supporting that, it's the mayor's public hearing, and so staff will be supporting that meeting, it's helped by the city.
So those are, the community meeting and the public hearing are when the public can be influencing the zoning requirements. I always think of, when I, when I think of design, like, design of buildings is not my thing, but the Bridge Street neck, they did a whole design thing, so I always look at that, in that process, and that was very resident-driven, and, and so that aspect of it, I keep going back to, and the process involved in that. So I'm just trying to figure out where, where the public is impacting how this is defined.
Sure, so again, like, that community meeting, it's, community members provide an input directly to the developer, and the developers know, who are moving through this process, that they need to get approval at very, a lot of steps through the city. So it's taking input directly before they move forward with the official application. But I would encourage members of the public to come to that public hearing on the preliminary application to also share their feedback, and that's where we would talk through design.
Okay. So then after the public hearing on the preliminary application that the mayor's holding, then the city is writing up the detailed zoning definition, I guess, the overlay definition?
There'll already be a draft zoning ordinance as part of that application. So the preliminary application, it's a form from the state, and there's a zoning, there'll be a zoning amendment, zoning application as part of that.
Do you know how long that process usually takes?
What process?
I guess from the community meeting to when, to when this, the preliminary, the draft zoning is available, the hearing is held, the amendments are made, what kind of time is that usually?
So Salem has not had a 40R district before, so it's difficult to say in Salem what that will be, and I think it'll depend on the district as well, because you'll see there can be very, a lot of variations between districts. So after the public hearing on the preliminary application, that, the application could immediately be submitted to the state, or the zoning amendment could be revised, and then submitted to the state. So it depends on what the feedback is.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Stott.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I lost half my mic, continue. I think it's good going after Councilor Cohen and Councilor Merkel, because you did ask the majority of my questions, specifically who was holding the public hearing and how that whole inter-process worked, but I did want to follow up on one funding question on the incentives. You said, I only took note down that the 3,000 per unit went into the general fund, are you saying that all funding goes into the general fund?
That is correct. The, the bonus payment at adoption goes to the general fund as well.
Yeah, I'm definitely curious if, if it doesn't conflict with Mass General Law, if we have the ability to put some requirements around that, would be good to know. The other part that I'm struggling with is just examples, so understanding that Salem doesn't have any 40R zones, if there may be some like nearby cities or towns that you could provide as examples, that would just be helpful to process it later. Thanks.
And in our, the town right next to us, the city right next to us, Beverly just recently passed a 40R district right next to Whole Foods, and their project is much deeper than 80% AMI, they have tiered income levels there, and I believe it's 100% affordable, but I know it has tiered affordability.
Yes.
Councilor Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth, to Amanda, through you. I just, and thank you to the other councilors, because those are some of my questions as well. One thing about the process with the, you know, 60 days to, for the state to review, and then the state has to review again, what comes to mind are, you know, the hurdles sometimes with, with the city, like, you know, waiting for home petitions and things of that nature. So I'm happy to see that there's a window of time, but is there ever a challenge with that, like, if they don't get to reviewing it, so then maybe you have to wait for another cycle, or do they tend to, I just don't know. Do they tend to, if the state has these deadlines, then they, they meet them? And, and so this, you know, wouldn't be the same situation as sometimes when we are waiting for the state, so that was, I only have two questions, but that was one of them.
Yeah, so these are timelines that are set forth in the regulations, so there are requirements of the state to meet them, and there is language in the regulations, if the state doesn't meet it, for the city to be able to move forward. I'd have to look more into what that means, but we have had preliminary conversations with staff at the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to let them know that Salem is expecting to work on some 40R districts this year, so that they're aware of this, and to, and to, to be aware that they're coming forward.
Okay, that's, that's helpful to know, that there is some language, yeah, that there's options if, if they don't, they don't, that doesn't end up happening at the state. And also just procedural, that we can have more than one district, so I'm just wondering what that looks like. So if we wanted to set one by, you know, our MBTA station downtown in this area, but then down the road, and we get one in place, and down the road, maybe the, you know, the South Salem rail stop, it becomes a reality, then if we wanted to consider one over there, and I'm just picking these areas at random, then you do the whole process again, I assume, for, for each one, you just start at the beginning, and this is what happens for any that you want to put in place, is that usually what it looks like?
That's right. So this chart here shows what would need to occur for each 40R district. What we could do is have sort of an umbrella district that has all the state requirements in there, the definitions, the filing procedures, the process, so that can all be in the front end, and then have sub-districts. And so if we had two sub-district applications at the same time, they could go through that process at the same time. That, I don't know if that has any feasibility of occurring, that you would have to that line up that perfectly, but each 40R district has to go through that process.
Thank you.
Councilor Mursula.
Thank you. Amanda, can you go back to the, the application submitted to the state, and then the state responds? Can they respond and say, no? And if so, why would they do that, and has that happened, like, what are they looking for specifically?
Sure, so what the state is looking for is that the zoning ordinance meets the criteria that's set forth in the regulations, and that this is the meat of it. Is it in an eligible location? Does it meet the affordability requirements? Are you in the minimum housing, the units per acre? Does the area have adequate infrastructure? Is it as-of-right process? And is the appeal process identified in there, in, in line with the regulations?
So could it turn into, they reply, and then you do some more work, and you resubmit an amended application, and you kind of get into this amendment loop for a little while that goes beyond the 60 days, or is it not that complicated?
Salem hasn't gone through it before, so I don't want to say it's not, there have been, there's a report that you could find online, and I can share it with the councilors on 40Rs to date, it was done in 2019 or 2018. This regulation was adopted in 2000, and it was adopted about 20 years ago. And so from that timeframe to about 2018, there may have been four communities that were rejected, but they were rejected with, here are things that you need to do to become in compliance. And it could have been something as simple as, it's not an as-of-right process, you need to adjust your process, or your units per acre are not meeting the guidelines.
And what would keep it from being an as-of-right process?
If you had, if it was a special permit, if it required beyond a site plan review.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Hapworth, through you to Amanda. Based on what Councilor Merkel said, I want to kind of throw a weird hypothetical, somewhat specific. I've always felt that Canal Street has a lot of opportunities, because there's a lot of underutilized properties, you know, single-floor businesses and things that could accommodate a lot more, and we're potentially going to have a, a train station, so it would be within the half-mile, obviously. In your presentation, and the slide before that, it says that there are potential economic opportunities for funding. So could a 40R potentially enable us to get more funding, let's say, for the, to finish the Canal Street, you know, climate project that has not been finished, we still need to get a pump station and a tank? Could the 40R potentially enable us to, you know, as, as it enables communities to get better deals for schools, could it enable us to get additional funding if it's within the, within that district?
Yeah, so it depends on the grant that you're applying for that would provide that funding, but most grants from the state have questions in them around, does your city have a housing production plan, which we do, and so we get extra points for that? Does your community have a 40R district? So you get extra points for that. So you see, the more the city works towards creating opportunities for housing growth, the more potential we have to unlock those grant dollars.
Councilor Stott.
Thank you, Chair. A follow-up on the transit station question, it does say for eligibility, it must be within a half-mile of a transit station, and I'm just wondering, technically, is, that's just that MBTA station, like, the Ferry Landing, for example, is not considered a transit station, or anything else, like, it's just, is that the only one that we have in Salem currently?
Yeah, we'd want to talk to Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities if there was a project near the ferry that we wanted to do, but there's not a project that I'm aware of that we would need to ask that question for. And then there's other opportunities, it could be otherwise deemed highly suitable locations, or commercial centers, or places like town centers, places where there's varied uses. So if you think of Highland Avenue, you have Market Basket, you have different types of uses along there.
Okay, so sorry, just for point of clarification, I was reading that as a list, but there's an or in between every one of those. Okay, that's helpful.
Councilor Davis.
Thank you, President Hapworth, through you. Do you know why, out of curiosity, the state would only, has that restriction of only up to 15% of the land, why wouldn't they want to see it as large as possible?
I don't know why the state had done that. I can make assumptions, it's around the financial incentives, because it does cost the state money, and there was one time where that money was getting really low, and so they dipped into other sources for it, and so it could be because of that, but that's just an educated guess up here.
Amanda, could you, so like, a lot of this here looks like, to me, it looks like downtown Salem, or even just large parts of Salem. What is the, what's the selling point on 40R? Like, what is the, from your perspective or from Tom's perspective, what's, what's, why are we as a city looking at this right now? And I think the density looks like it's mostly in line with where downtown Salem is right now, the mixed use, I think, is in line with downtown Salem in a lot of neighborhoods. I'm just curious if, if there's a pitch as to why this is beneficial to Salem right now, or could potentially be.
Sure, so a big piece of the incentive are the payments, that's a huge, that's a huge opportunity for Salem is to get those payments. Also, the process lends itself, it's, it's a good opportunity for developers who would want to build, because of that upfront process, once they do go forward with their actual plan approval, having that appeal process where parties appealing have to post bond to cover the potential costs and delay. You know, appeals take time, and that time costs a lot of money, and it could kill a project. And so having that appeal process is very helpful, and it creates housing production. We have the opportunity to have 20% of the units affordable, and have them at, you could have them at various income levels, but it creates a higher percentage of affordable units in our inclusionary housing ordinance.
Are there specific areas in Salem that we're, that we'd be looking at for 40R? I guess it would be limited right now to MBTA, I'm just curious if there's...
Okay. Yeah, so there's a project that has had some community meetings already, at the Life Bridge Shelter, that's considering a 40R district. There's another project at South Campus, Salem State University, that's considering a 40R district, and then Shetland Park is considering a 40R district as well. So you see, those are in different corners of the community, but they all have opportunities to take a look at this.
Thank you. Councilor Harvey.
So the 40R, as if I'm reading this right, is within a half a mile of T Station. How is the South Campus falling to that half-mile radius concern as far as becoming a 40R zone?
Sure, and so that's what we need to look at, would it be otherwise deemed highly suitable through other factors? Is it near other uses? Is it a walkable location to get to, you know, varied uses? And so it, those are ors, I should have made that more clear in the slide, a half-mile to a train station is just one, but it could also be an area where there's restricted development.
So that being said, are you, are they trying to say that the college is another use? Or, I just don't see what, with, around the South Campus within a half a mile, that makes it a u, that type of a use spot, you know what I mean?
Sure, so we don't want to talk about any specific projects here, those are just named as, like, we know that they're considering a 40R, but we haven't done an analysis of whether they're eligible. And so when they come forward, the city will evaluate, isn't it, is it an eligible project? And then the state will also evaluate it as well, if it gets, when it moves forward to that part, and the state will determine, if it's not eligible, then they wouldn't be able to do the 40R district.
Okay, and one more question is, for instance, half a mile from the T Station, we have a lot of historic sites, historic buildings within that half-mile. Does the Historic Commission have a say in what those buildings are going to look like at that point when they decide they want to develop this?
Sure, so if a 40R district was created in a historic district, there could be a process for historic review, but it would need to be an as-of-right process.
Okay, thank you.
Could you, could you be clear on the, the as-of-right process for the historic district? I'm just curious what that would look like. So, I mean, for now, like, if a, if a project were to be in, in the McIntyre District or in the Derby Street neighborhood, it would need to go before the Historic Commission? Can you just be, just clarify that statement?
Sure, so again, the project, the, the district couldn't say, it would need to have specific criteria that it's evaluating for, and if it meets that criteria, then the project would need to be approved. So there's set criteria that need to be evaluated.
So would they still be able to advise on house colors or materials on the Historic Commission, or would it need to be written into the 40R?
It would need to be part of the design, either guidelines or standards, so the, the ordinance could put forth guidelines, and that's what the, so that way there's a transparency for the developer, for the community, for the commission, to understand what they're providing that feedback on.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on 40R before we move on to HDEP? Seeing none, so we'll move on.
Seeing none, so move along.
So this, the Housing Development Incentive Program, another program established by Massachusetts General Law. This is established under Chapter 40V, but we don't call it Chapter 40V, we call it H-DIP, and I don't know why we do that. So we've been using this tool since 2017. It was established in 2012, but we wanted to provide you an update because there are some changes to the process that we wanted to make you aware of, and those changes are locally. So the goal of the program is to increase residential growth and expand housing diversity. It supports economic development and provides neighborhood stabilization in gateway cities. Salem's a gateway city, and that's why we get to tap into this tool. So the specific focus on H-DIP at the state level is the creation of multifamily market-rate development. Because in other gateway communities, there's been a challenge in creating market-rate housing. We haven't had that issue in Salem. We have been able to get market-rate housing, so we've been using this tool as a way to support affordable housing. The tool consists of a municipal and city partnership with a local tax exemption on all or part of the increased property value resulting from those improvements. And then there's also a state tax credit. So the council has seen this chart before. The percentage of that local tax exemption, the tax increment exemption, which we call a TIE, is negotiated with the city, and this chart shows what that looks like. The minimum TIE is 10% for five years, and the maximum allowed under the H-DIP program is 100% for 20 years. So just to recap on how this works, is the TIE agreement provides the tax exemption just on the increased property value. That's the new value, which you can see in number four, the light gray, that's resulted from the improvements. The property owners required to continue paying the property taxes before the investment, that's shown in that blue box. But of course, that property value increases over time, and so they'll also need to continue to pay the baseline growth, that's shown in that little bit darker triangle in two, shown as number two. And then at the end of the term, the end of the TIE, the city collects the full property tax revenue moving forward. So I just want to reiterate, the city never collects less than the base value of the property taxes. So the benefits of this Housing Development Incentive Program tool is to increase the residential development by providing an additional financing tool, and that's to overcome development challenges. And the type of challenges that we've seen in Salem that this can assist, and this isn't limited to, but it has opportunities to deeping affordability, and that is providing a lower AMI, area median income, creating more affordable units. It could be up to 20% of the units as affordable. And it can also help projects that have high costs associated with historic preservation. In Salem, we also have a lot of sites that have contamination, so this can help overcome those contaminated sites. Again, there are requirements to be eligible for the H-DIP program. The first two requirements Salem clears for all properties, because Salem is a gateway city, we're eligible for this program. The project needs to be in an H-DIP area, and that area, it needs to be approved by City Council and the state. A few years ago, the City Council approved the entire city as an H-DIP area, and that means that any property in the city could apply for this. A minimum of 80% of the units need to be market rate. So again, that means up to 20% could be affordable. The projects that are eligible for this need to either be new construction, or it could be substantial redevelopment, repair, and renovation of properties. And it requires a local tax increment exemption, again, that's that TIE that I showed you on the prior slide. And that means that the developer can't apply for the state tax credits unless they get the local TIE. In Salem, we have two additional local requirements before we move the project forward with a TIE. We require that the project already have a planning board decision, so that means their development has been, their development plan has been approved. In Salem, this is a new process, but we are requiring a third-party peer review of the TIE request. And the reason for that is to evaluate whether the project is, needs the TIE to be economically viable. And the city staff will also use that peer review to help make a recommendation to the City Council on the term and the percentage of the TIE. So the process for the H-DIP, the orange shows the local requirement, and then the white boxes are the state requirements under Chapter 40B. The first step, again, in Salem, a local requirement is we want those projects, we require them to have their planning board approval in hand. The second step is the developer submits a request for a tax increment exemption. Currently, that process is a letter to the mayor, and the mayor will evaluate it on a rolling basis. In calendar year 2025, so that's next year, we're going to shift that to an application process, because this is becoming a very competitive program. The state has also set specific deadlines for their applications. So we are going to create an application that lines up with the state's application, and that way the City Council knows when to expect these, and it's not throughout the year. You have a set timeline of when you would expect them. Third box there is that peer review of the TIE. Before it goes to City Council, we want that peer review to be complete. Again, that's so that you can be informed from a third-party evaluating the pro forma that the TIE is needed for the project to be economically viable, and what the appropriate term and percentage would be. The next two boxes could be done concurrently or flipped, it doesn't need to be in this order, but the preliminary certification from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities is something that the developer submits to the state. And at the same time, the City Council can be discussing and discussing and voting on a tax increment exemption. So this is a process that requires approval from the City Council, the body that decides the TIE, and whether that, what that term and percentage would be. After the City Council approves a TIE, if they vote and approve a TIE, then the developer can take that TIE to the state for their conditional certification. The developer cannot bring or submit a conditional certification to the state until they have their TIE in hand from the City Council. The last step, again, this is more for the developer, is the final certification, those state tax credits that they would get. Those start rolling when the development is 80% occupied. So it's not a building permit, it's when it's 80% occupied.
Thank you Chair President Hathworth, through you to Amanda. I'm going to make a statement, maybe you can confirm it if I explain it right. Market-rate housing seems counterintuitive to me, but under the H-DIP process, it actually can enable more affordability and, you know, in percentage and ratio?
That's correct.
And it's, so it's really important that we, in my mind, that we expedite the TIE process. So you had mentioned that after the, after the peer review, there's those two boxes, preliminary certification from Housing and Livable Communities and City Council. Is it possible for us to move the City Council approval to after the peer review?
Yes, and so that, preliminary certification to the state, that's something that the developer does, the city doesn't do that, and the developer can do that, I'm sorry, are you asking if the preliminary certification can happen before the peer review?
No, I'm asking, in my mind, I, I'm just stating my opinion, that I think the City Council should be involved in the process as soon as possible. So I would stick the City Council vote between the peer review and the certification from Housing and Livable Communities.
Sure, okay. So the, yeah, the City Council can occur before the preliminary certification, that's up to the developer, when they want to submit that certification to the state. So those two boxes could be flipped.
But we can't mandate that?
The preliminary certification?
We can't mandate the council approval before they go to the state. I just feel like it's, I just feel it important for the council to weigh in before the application is made to the state. I'm just asking if it's possible, I'm not speaking on behalf of the council.
Sure, the state's process actually sets forth that they require the preliminary certification as soon as possible, and it's a preliminary certification to give feedback to the developer. It's not, they're not weighing in on the tax increment exemption, they're looking at the qualified expenses, the total number of units, is it in line with the Housing Development Incentive Program?
Okay, so, but there, are they approving what will be in front of the City Council?
They will review the tax increment exemption, they need to approve the tax increment exemption to make sure it meets the regulations.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you President Hathworth, and I also want to say thank you for everyone that worked hard. We have a crisis, we need more housing production, we need to stabilize every price point in the housing market, and we need to focus on affordability. So I appreciate this, I appreciate all of this tonight. Just out of curiosity, the peer review for the TIE, it's a third-party, I'm curious as to who that is?
Yeah, so it could be different for every project. We're looking for folks who understand development pro formas and how state tax credits work.
Okay, so it sounds like, yeah, there's flexibility there on who that would be. Okay, interesting. And you had mentioned too, having an application for the ties and maybe the tip. I think that's a really good idea, as opposed to just, you know, sending a letter. I think that's a, yeah, a better process. Thank you.
Counsel Murcilla.
Thank you President. Is it possible to use Five Broad Street as an example of where we are in this process?
Sure, so the Five Broad Street project, which is a beautiful picture here, is a little bit unique, because the Housing Development Incentive Program was on hold for quite a few years. The state hadn't funded the program, and so that's why it sat on hold. So this is an example of a project that has a TIE and is ready to move forward, but hasn't moved forward because they don't have, they need that subsidy for the project to be economically viable. So this project has submitted their TIE to the state, and they're waiting for, and they submitted their preliminary application, and submitted a conditional application to the state, and they're waiting for that approval from the state. So that was about three weeks ago, they submitted their application.
It was only three weeks ago?
Well, they got, I'm sorry, they got feedback three weeks ago that they looked good, but they don't have an answer yet. The state is still reviewing the application.
So is that on, so are they on the final certification step right now, or is that what they're waiting for, the final certification?
They are waiting for the conditional certification.
Conditional certification. So, did they get negative feedback? I'm not, okay, all right. So then, once they get the conditional certification, what do they need to do to get the final?
They need to build the project. So the conditional certification means you are approved for the credits, and then after you construct the project and are 80% occupied, then you, they get their state tax credits.
Okay, so they're, they're waiting for the conditional, and then they can start?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel Stott.
Thank you. Similar line of questions, I'm actually going to see what I, so my first question that I wrote down was, because you're creating now an application process, that means to me, you received a lot of these, I'm curious how many. Obviously, the Broad Street project, the City Council TIE was before my time on council, so, I believe so. No, was it during? Okay, I'm trying, so I'm trying to like, think of when those H-DIP projects were...
I think it was before us.
Yeah, I think it was before us. I know the minis will, anyway. So I'm curious about the number of requests. I think I had this, a similar question when the last tax incremental request was in front of us in council for the business of just like, what is the process for this? How can people just ask? So I'm really appreciative that there's going to be an application process for it. I think it makes it a little more equitable than, oh, you just send an email to the mayor, put some more framework around it. But again, I'm curious, the number of applications, like how many requests? How long was the pause on for? So like, have people been waiting for this to be turned back on? And are we concerned with that final certification for the 80% occupancy if the payment is then? Like, are we concerned about the funds remaining there, you know, a year down the line when that final occupancy is there? I guess it's not really our concern, more of a developer's concern, but...
So we have two applications that the city is reviewing currently. And in terms of the funding, my understanding is when they have the conditional certification, they have that funding available for once the project is occupied. And how long the, how long H-DIP has been in hold? It's been a couple years.
It's been at least two.
At least two years.
Okay. I did have one follow-up question on the peer review of the TIE. I feel like that's going to be like a holdup in the timeframe, and I'm assuming the developer's paying for that peer review?
The developer is paying for the peer review, and we have been able to move these along quite quickly. They are ongoing, and it's, the timeframe will depend on how fast the developer can get additional information to the city and the peer reviewer if we have questions on their costs.
Do we have an average idea of how much those peer reviews cost? That's a very specific question.
I believe they're, I believe they're around $9,000.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Murcilla, then Counsel Cohen.
Thank you. Amanda, how many projects are in the process of waiting for the conditional certification right now, since there was such a gap?
There are two projects waiting for a conditional certification. It's Five Broad Street and 38 Norman Street.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you Chair President Hathworth. I was under the understanding that the fund dried up pretty quick, because it was about $10 million, and even though there's a lot of applications statewide, it's closer to $30 million. Does that sound right?
Yeah, so the, it was a $10 million program. You know, it was exhausted. The recent legislation said this next round, there's $50 million, then the program will be at a $30 million annual amount. The challenging thing for folks has been that it was agreement, you know, going back a few legislative cycles on the House and Senate side on the program, but the bill that it was contained in just, you know, didn't get over the finish line, and that happened a couple times. But last year, it was successful, so we have the 50 million, because there is a backlog, and there are 26 communities that have these projects that have been waiting, and then it'll be $30 million going forward. So the state, the state also changed its process. Originally, it was just a rolling application process, they changed it to one application per year, one project per city per year. They're still, they haven't landed on what their long-term process will be, but as Amanda said, we want to line ours up with the state, so it's more coherent for everybody here. That, you know, the application comes in, can go through the process, be done, if it's going to be done, and get to the state, that it's not just coming in.
Thank you. Yeah, it seems like a lot of money, but in my... Yeah, I, it seems like a lot of money, but in my mind, it's not. And so are making the process more economical, so that projects can be expedited, I think will be a benefit to the ones in Salem.
Counsel Murcillo.
Thank you, Chair. Is there a limit, does the state limit the community on how many they can have approved per year? Is there anything like that?
It is a competitive process, and so this, the city, it's in the city's advantage to act competitively in approving the ties. The city could also approve a tax increment exemption that's not moving forward with tax credits. So it has the option, they might be a project, we don't have any in front of us, but there could be a project that just needs the tie to move forward. So that's an option as well.
So if they don't get approved, there's other pathways they can take to make the finances work out?
It depends on the project. Most projects that, the projects that we've seen to date that have moved forward, this council needed, needed the state's credits.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on H-DIP? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you, Amanda, thank you, Tom, thank you everyone for coming out here tonight. We're going to take, if there's no other questions or comments, generally, we'll take public comment. If anybody in person would like to give public comment? Just as a reminder, it's not a, public comment's not a public question-answer session, but you feel free to give your testimony. Come on up. Remember to speak right into the microphone, so they can hear you at home.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I'd like to thank you so much. I appreciate the presentation this evening, and 40R, and H-DIP. But I question, why? Why would this city agree to override zoning? The city has already agreed to over a dozen major developments that are high density. They've already been approved. What will those projects be doing to our city? What impact will they have on our infrastructure, such as traffic, sewer, water, police, ambulance? I could go on. Salem is a city that prides itself on its history and its historic properties. All of these buildings will have an impact on how those historic properties feel. Many of our residents live here because of the unique architecture, and it is one of the very reasons why so many people visit this city. I also question how some developers seem to have already evaded the process of zoning approval. In particular, I am referring to Life Bridge and the 50 beds at Canal Street. 47 Canal Street now hosts 50 shelter beds and one single bathroom in a former garage building not zoned for human habitation. There was not any public notice of this expansion, and abutters were not notified that these beds would be going into place. Thank you. And I am concerned, and I know we're not talking specific projects, but I'm concerned that in your presentation, you alluded to that perhaps the public meetings with Life Bridge were possibly 40R presentations, because they were not discussed that way. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there's nobody else here in person. If there's anybody online who would like to give testimony, please raise your hand and we'll allow you to speak. Seeing none? Any further questions from the council? Counsel Murcillo.
Thank you, Chair. Can we just get an answer from Amanda on the question of the public meetings that have already been held for Life Bridge, and whether they qualified for the 40R?
All right, so the, the 40R process has not officially started for any project. The city is just asking if a developer is interested in the 40R district to share plans, share their ideas with the community before we move forward with a public hearing. So having, it's, it's not 40R-specific, but just in general, having a community meeting that shares that a development is proposed, that is being considered.
So just to, just to go back to that, they still need to hold that community meeting to present their plan, their current plan?
No, so having, it's a community meeting to share that a development plan is being considered. So the city, the community members know a development plan is in consideration, so that's essentially check that box of there have been community meetings. Members of the public are aware a project is being considered there. And again, that local request, that first gold box for 40R, is the city asking for anyone who's interested in the 40R district, again, share that there is development consideration in this area before we have the public hearing. And so the public hearing, the official public hearing that the mayor has, is not the first time the community hears about it.
I'm still confused about how we're collecting input from the public on the specifics of the zoning overlay, the dimensions, the design, all of that. I'm still confused about where that happens, where you're getting the community feedback.
So that community feedback will happen at the preliminary application, the first preliminary application. Not the, the community meeting is for members of the public to provide feedback to the developer. So when they move forward with an application, it's already had some feedback. It's not coming forward without any consideration of public comments. And then that first preliminary application is when the city will take in that feedback.
So the city, so the city will be working on the definition of the zoning overlay, presenting it at that public hearing, and then taking feedback from the community?
Correct. At that preliminary, public hearing will be sharing the application. The application includes the zoning amendment and collecting feedback from the, from the community.
Okay, thank you.
So just, I'll go to Counsel Harvey in just a second, but so just to be clear again, I think, I think we beat that to death, but I think, so this, this gold box here, it says community, community meeting. If Life Bridge were to apply for 40R, the position is that this, that box has already been checked?
Yes, and there's no zoning requirement, there's no state requirement for that gold box, it's just the city saying, if you're considering a 40R district, we want you to get out in front of the public that a development is being considered.
Got it, okay, so it's not, not a legal requirement, it's a requirement that the city uses as, as a best practice. Okay, thank you. Counsel Harvey.
Thank you. So I guess I'm kind of with Counsel Murcillo and Counsel Hapworth on this. These community meetings for, let's just say, the Life Bridge project have already happened. So even though we haven't voted on a 40R zone, was this explained to these people at the community meetings what the intention of the city is, as far as the zoning overlay? I mean, because I think that could be, I'm just saying, so you're taking old meetings and placing them in this position before we go through the zoning? No?
So again, that's, there's no regulatory requirement for that community meeting. It's a request of the city. The first preliminary application is when we present, there's a 40R being requested, because a community meeting could happen, and a developer says, you know what, a 40R isn't the right path for me, I'm going to go through a 40B project or a different process. And so it's for them to feel out also what is the appropriate path for their potential development.
Thank you.
Counsel Cohn.
I'm not good at this, but I'm going to try to.
I get what you're.
But the second box is the meeting that is run by the mayor and the staff. So whatever happens before that is, is just not defined, but the, that's the meeting that is required to move forward.
Any further questions? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Hapworth. So just, I also appreciate the way you framed it, that, and also you, Amanda, that for all developments, whatever path it ends up, because we see developments taking all kinds of different paths when they're trying to fund them, that it's just best practice and consideration to, at some point, have a meeting to, you know, let the community know what projects are on the radar. And I appreciate that happening even before it's an official one, and there's something concrete in front of us that it, at least, at least word about it is, is getting out there, regardless of what path it ends up going down. So I think having it a little less restrictive for a real preliminary one encourages them to just get out there, even if they don't know, because if they're waiting for a required meeting because they're applying for this, they may not want to if they're not sure what they're going to be applying for. So I appreciate encouraging developers to, as best practice, come to the community with their ideas and their plans. And then, of course, there's, you know, still a follow-up process in place for, for a hearing and, and an application processing as well, if that's, if I have that correct.
Well, thank you all, and thank you, Amanda, again. So I guess the, the motion here would be to receive and file, I believe, so if someone wants to make that motion, it's a recommendation.
So moved.
Counsel Murcillo moves that this be received and filed. We have a second?
Second.
Counsel Stott, seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries.
Can I, can I also ask that, do we have this on the shared drive? This actual?
I don't, we can get it uploaded to the shared drive, though. Is it up there?
I have it up there.
Okay, thank you. Any other motions? Counsel Murcillo.
Motion to adjourn.
Counsel Murcillo moves, Murcillo moves to adjourn. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. Thank you all.